Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order if you will please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us bow our heads and you pray with me while I pray. Our Father which art in heaven, once again we assemble ourselves in the house of government to do diligence of the duty of the citizens of Cartersville, where as you come down and give us wisdom, patience, and understanding to do the right thing before you, we ask these blessings and all blessings in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Tom in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Olmer, roll please.
Gary Hodge, Word 1.
Here.
Jay Steff, Word 2. Carrie Roth, Word 3.
Here.
Alvin Cooley, Word 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Word 5.
Here.
Tapping, Word 6. Thank you.
We do have a special instance this evening that is, we have Gary, Councilman Fox, who's joining us from another part of the country. There is a provision in our...
Under state laws.
Under state law that allows council members to participate remotely if they're out of district and as long as there's a quorum of the folks here in person. So Gary, good to have you with us.
Hopefully he's still there.
He may have just said here and left. Anyway, there you go. Thank you, Gary. The first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from May 17th, and I will turn it over to council to make any adjustments to that, those minutes, and if not, if there are no changes, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Minutes are approved unanimously. We have a second reading tonight of case number T-18-04. Mr. Menino, if you'll get us started with that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed text amendment to the sign ordinance. It is a request to extend the allowable area where electronic signs can go along West Avenue. It's basically a request to extend it an additional 500 feet from the intersection of Henderson Drive back east. With that, again, this is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any questions for Mr. Menino at this point, from council? Thank you. I'll open up a public hearing relative to file case T-18-04 and give anybody wishing to speak for or against the opportunity to step forward. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing relative to T-18-04 and turn it over to council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt, you've got the next couple items that are first readings of ordinances. First one is for the amendment to our utilities ordinance regarding water and sewer rates.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, this will be the first reading of this ordinance. This is the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget, includes an increase in the water and sewer fund rates, and this will help to address the maintenance and capital issues of the water fund. The increase equates to a 7.5% increase on residential water and sewer rates. This increase actually equates to a 66 cents per 100 cubic feet of water used by city residents. The total estimated increase for residential water and sewer customers is about $2.24 a month on 7,000 gallons of water consumed. The increase will be needed to maintain the existing system and plan for any necessary future expansions. Even with this increase, we will still have, still be one of the lowest water and sewer rates around the county and surrounding areas.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Tom on this?
Will this rate affect our commercial and industrial?
Will not affect commercial, just strictly on residential. And this will go into effect July the 1st.
And this is something that we've done years, pretty standard as a means to, you know, you look at, I'll use Atlanta as an example, where they went for a period of time of about eight or 10 years without having an increase at all, and then they had to hit everybody with about a 30 to 40% increase. You can see on the chart that's on the slide there that it's, you know, they're on the far right-hand side for what they're paying for water in the city of Atlanta. And again, I think as a, I mean, everybody in this, everybody up here is a rate payer, so I mean, we're paying the same rates everybody else is. Nobody likes paying more, but I would certainly rather have a $2.25 increase year to year than get hit with a 30 to 40% increase, you know, down the road sometimes, so...
Well, and some of this does go to support the items later on the agenda where we're borrowing approximately $60 million, and a lot of that is federally unfunded mandates that were required to do. It's great that we can do this and still keep the rates low.
Absolutely. So, all right. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
We don't get anywhere too far away, because we're not doing any action on that. We'll just ask you, as you guys change the slide and presentation, for the budget ordinance for FY 1819.
Yes, sir. Again, this is the first reading for this budget ordinance, and I'll try to work the little magical wand here, and if I mess up, let me know, I'll go back and try to do it. Let's see. Okay. The positives of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019 are no property tax increase, continues the 10-year capital plan, increase in water and sewer rates that we briefly just talked about, there's no increase or decrease in transfers to the general fund from the three utility funds, incorporates the goals from your visiting session, the funding of major capital improvements in gas, water, and parks, and finally, it has the fire station number three being built with using SPOSS 2014 funds. This slide illustrates the overall increase of $15.2 million, otherwise known as a 9.5% increase in the fiscal year 2019 budget over the 2018 budget. This slide is a comparison by budget fund. You'll see that the general and special revenue funds has an overall decrease of $2.6 million. The gas, I'm only going to point out the bigger items. The gas has an increase of about $1.7 million. Water and sewer fund has a big gap or big increase in there of about $12.6 million. And the SPOSS has an increase there of about $3.1 million. And this is actually, most of the increases in the water or water and SPOSS are driven by capital expenditures, and well, a lot of those in gas are also. This is a budget comparison by type. I won't talk about all of them, but you'll see the bigger items is an increase in operation of about $5.2 million, and an increase in capital of about $6.9 million. Am I going too fast?
No. Again, those capital projects, the capital increases is primarily the gas department, the parks and recreation items, and that's primarily it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This slide represents the overall budget from 2012 to 2019. You'll see that 2012, we were about $128 million. We kind of slacked off, not really slacked off, but kind of evened out in 2015 and 16 at $140 million, and we've increased this year to $183 million. This slide talks, or shows the number of staffing levels. In 2012, we were at 360. We decreased in 2015 to 354, and we have increased that back in 2018 and 19 to 362 employees. Talk a little bit about the capital projects going on. The general recreation bond fund, we're going to be completing the Arbor Street Pool, I believe, if I'm correct, if it's all right, complete, Greg? We can check that off the list then. We'll be making some renovations to the senior aquatic center. We'll be doing some work at the Hicks Park and Sports Complex, and the multiple, some of the larger water fund projects are rehabbing the sand filters, stabilization of the water treatment plant, engineering and construction of the TMDL, which is the Water Control Pollution Control Plant, sorry. And we'll be doing some work on mission road sewer replacement, and we've got several other upgrades going on. And the gas projects include a new building, headquarters, Transco distribution station, and some other various capital expenditures. The garage, we'll be putting in a fuel pumping station, and finally, in 2004, the bigger project there is the fire station number three. Just a couple of pictures. These are schematic drawings of the gas headquarters, and you can see over on the far, on the bottom picture, over on the far right-hand side of that picture, would be the gas filling station. Larger projects in the gas also include the Transco pipeline.
That's more interior than the vehicle.
The largest project in the water and sewer project is the TMDL removal, Water Pollution Control Plant improvements. And the last one is the SPOSS project. This is the actual picture of the fire station number four. We will be using the same layout with some modifications to the architectural drawing to complete the fire station number three. And we don't want to forget the project going on in the recreation, these are all finished products, the playground, there's a walking trail, the baseball fields, and some of the new buildings down in the Dillinger Park area. Talk a little bit about the agency, outside agency funding. The funding for the outside agencies this year remains the same as last year, $717,660. And there's a list, I won't go through them, there's a list of all those folks we're going to be funding. This is the picture of the overall pie chart of the overall budget. You'll see that the larger funds include the electric fund at 27%, water and sewer fund at 22%, general fund at 22%, and the gas fund at 20%. This is pretty typical of how the city of Cartersville budget is on a year in year basis. We've already talked about the water and sewer rates, I won't reiterate that. Again, proposed rates, where we are currently, where we are proposed, and comparing to those other entities close by. Residential electric rates, just wanted to show everybody once again that we are, and we will be below the, our competition, I don't want to call her name, but we will be a little below our competition. Gas rates, for the 2017 calendar year, we averaged $1.21 per therm. The next lowest would be Constellation at $1.50. Again, just want to make sure that our customers know that we do everything we can to keep that cost low. And in conclusion, we have fiscal austerity, we're keeping the transfers to the general fund from utility funds were constant, and it's driven by major water, gas, and fire improvements. Any questions?
Thank you. Question more for, I guess you and/or Rebecca, but the, these files, will these be available on our website? If people want to, if you can do that, that'd be great. That way, if anybody wants to review the presentation, has an opportunity to see that information out there.
Just want to thank you, Tom. I know you've been working hard on this. Thank all the department heads and staff, you guys have been working on this since March. Thanks much for that. I don't want to oversimplify it, but the work on the gas HQ, the Transco line, the water and wastewater work, the fire station, plus completing the parks, we're very busy as an organization, and the fact that we can do all this and keep our rates at or below the competitors, I think is a great thing. I appreciate all your work on it.
Thank you. And these projects will be ongoing for, well, some of the projects will be ongoing for a couple of years, and some of them we hope to have within, done within a 12-month period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, we'll take both of these items up for consideration, final vote at our meeting on, what did that begin with? June 21st. Thank you. Sam? Mr. Lovell, you have the next item.
Yes, Mayor. MEAG, the Municipal Electric Authority of Georgia, is proposing to do a bond issue later in this year, which basically will amend some auditing requirements, and also restructure the bonds in such an amount that it will lower their interest rates to allow them to take advantage of refinancing opportunities in the future by increasing their bond capacity. What I'm asking y'all to do tonight is, how this process works is MEAG has, I think it's 49 cities, I may be off, but, to get approval for all of them, and so what they like to do is to have all the cities pre-approve executing the documents related to the bond, because when they actually file the bond for validation down in Atlanta, they have a 20-day period for all the cities to file the answers. So some cities' meetings don't necessarily coincide with that time period, so they ask for everyone to pre-approve it. So tonight, by this resolution, what I'm asking y'all is to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign any of the related documents to the proposed bond issuance in the future, subject to the approval of the city manager.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? If there's not, a chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I think that was an aye, so we got passes unanimously. Thank you, Keith. You also have the next item, please.
The next item, Mayor, as y'all know, Mr. Grove, next to me, is retiring as of June 28th this year, after 20, 20, how many years, Sam, of service? 22 years of service. And as a result, the city went through an interview process, and y'all selected a city manager. Related to that, we have an employment agreement which has been presented to her, and she has signed that agreement, and that agreement is to be presented to y'all for approval. Basically, what the employment agreement provides is to be consistent with the charter amendment y'all did earlier this year in February, which y'all will now be allowed to have employment agreements with city managers, which will basically coincide with the mayor's terms of office. And so for this case, that would be January 2nd of 2020. She will take, become employed by the city, she already is, but as a city manager, as an assistant city manager, and continue that from June 18th until June 28th. And on June 28th, she will become the official city manager of the city of Cartersville. On June 21st, the council will actually have a formal swearing-in ceremony for her. And it is recommended for approval.
Okay. And her name is Tamara Broad.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I should have announced her name, but yeah.
Okay.
I thought I'd say that for you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Tamara happens to be here tonight. Good evening. All right, so council, we have this city manager employment agreement before you. Any discussion, and if not, a motion is in order.
I'll just add one thing relative to this. You've never had this before, and I appreciate you doing this and making it available for any city manager in the future. This is the standard of the profession. Every city you go into has one of these, and the fact that we haven't had it, I think, is something that's needed to be added, and I appreciate the fact that you all can.
Thank you for that. Thank you for your leadership in getting us there, and certainly, thank you for putting it together, Keith, with using the outstanding ICMA language and making sure we got something that's...
I love copying and pasting.
There you go. I know that's probably how you got your law degree.
Pretty much.
Is there any discussion on this contract and agreement, and if not, a motion is in order?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Mr. Anderson, you have the next item.
Yes, Sir, Mayor and Council. This is the Leek Mounds, Etowah Riverwalk grant closeout with Georgia DOT. We received $1,610,000 in grant money for this trail. The total trail cost, total expenditures cost was $2,295,511.24, with the city's match of $685,000, I think that amount was, somewhere in here, I can't find it now. But we had a difference, a net deduct from our match money for the grants of $349,798.76. And I'm requesting that council approve mayor and the city clerk to sign any and all related documents closing this trail out.
Basically, we're done with the project, and it came in about $349,000 under?
Under, that was what we had in for both trails, yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Just compliment you again on the park projects and on this project. They look really good.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Michael Hill, next item, please.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. This first one here is for a proposal from Geo-Hydro Engineers. This is for soil testing and reporting. This comes to $13,400. This also includes a rock clause for $8,500, and a total on it's $21,900.
Thank you. Any discussion, and if not, a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Michael?
The second one also is for our Transco project here on the site. This is with Stevenson Engineering, is also a proposal. This is for the Williamson Site Metering Station, and it has grading, erosion control, and permitting service that will be done by Stevenson for us. It also has some structural engineering and rainfall monitoring. Rainfall monitoring is $3,000, I said $500 a month. So hopefully, that'll cover it, but if it does, I'm sure we'll work with that.
What do you monitor rainfall for?
It's the law. That EPDS stuff, Tommy could tell us all about it, I know.
Spare us.
But anyways, I say $19,350.
Thank you, Michael. Questions, comments, or motions?
I'll make them.
Did you just make a motion, Gary?
Sure.
Great.
They're written in the contract.
There you go. I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Great. Coast to coast. Thank you. Michael, Mr. Porter, you got the next item, please.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Telnet Systems needs to provide us updated equipment for our camera system. We use Vicon cameras, and they are updating their system, their software to Valaris, so we need to make that upgrade purchase of a cost of $5,757.97.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Jones, the next four.
Good evening, everyone. Up first, we need to replace a set of shell cutters for using our tapping machines. We talked about in the work session. This tapping machine, which, mind you, is still going strong, was purchased sometime in the late 70s, and we have finally worn out the bits that go in it. We took bids for replacing those. Core and main was the low-price bidder for four-through-eight-inch replacement bits at $5,944, and would recommend that for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Bob.
Yes, Sir. Next up, we have a pair of plug valves in the wastewater plant. These valves are downstream of the pits which receive septage hauling. We get about 168,000 gallons of hauled septage every month in the plant, and if you've had a young child that lives in your house, you know that they are capable of flushing all manner of things down a toilet, and those things foul these valves. The way this thing's built now, we actually have to bring a machine out, dig the valves up, take the valves apart, clean all the stuff out of them, put them back together, and bury them again. This is something that happens with some frequency, and what we'd like to do is construct a vault around the valve, so we don't have to dig them up every time. Took bids for doing that, and Childress Foundation was low bid at $12,345, so would recommend that for your approval.
Just as a point of clarification, the parents blame their children for flushing those things down.
Well, there is a maximum that we live by in the wastewater industry, is that the size of the object that you can flush is inversely proportional to the age of the person flushing it.
Wait.
A two-year-old can flush a refrigerator down the toilet. I don't understand it, but it's true.
All right. File that under that, sorry, I made that comment. Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Bob.
Yes, Sir. Next up, we'd like to replace our streaming current monitor. This is something that we've used since 2000 at the water plant. What this is, is it's essentially a monitor that measures the charge, surface charge of particles in raw water, the water we're bringing in from the lake. And what it does is it helps us optimize our coagulant dosage. So what we do is we put a chemical in this raw water, and it helps those particles to clump together and to settle as a first treatment step. The streaming current monitor we have is approaching 20 years old. We had an issue with it. They came in, were able to fix it, but they also told us, hey, we're not making parts for this thing anymore. So it's something that we use daily, and would like to replace it with a new machine. Took bids for that. The low bid for replacement streaming current monitor came from MicroMetrix at $6,750, and would recommend that for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Evoqua service technician.
Yes, Sir. Last up, we need to retain services for a service tech to diagnose a problem we're having with our number four secondary screw. Back in April, you approved a bearing replacement in that piece of equipment. We installed the bearing in advance of the tropical storm Alberto that came through a couple of weeks ago. We were expecting a good bit more rain than we actually received. During installation, we made all the adjustments we're capable of making, and there is still an issue with the rotation of that piece of equipment. We've had a similar problem in the past. We've had these guys come out, they've always been able to fix it, and we would like to have that done with this piece of equipment. It's about a $15,000 bearing, and we'd like to not tear that up in the first 90 days. So with that, I'd ask for a not-to-exceed amount of $7,550. That'd give us two full days of onsite work, if needed. I have every reason to believe it will come in underneath, under that amount, but would just like to have that ceiling put in place.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Bob on this item? And if not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bob. Mr. Sanders, you've got the next item, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Last October, the city submitted a notice of intent to comply with the MPDES municipal stormwater permit, and part of that permit is a stormwater management plan, and we developed that plan, and we need the mayor to be able to sign it. So this is, we request permission for the mayor to sign this document.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Gary. Got a hint of you there. Ms. Olmer, you have the election results to verify, right?
Yes. Citizens voted last month on whether or not to continue these SPOSS funds and redevelopment powers. It did pass, both city and county-wide. City approved the SPOSS at a rate of 70%, and redevelopment powers at a rate of 67%. This information was gathered from Bartow County elections, and it is recommended for y'all's approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve the results.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have two items to add to the agenda. Chair, will you entertain a motion to add those items?
There would be three here.
Oh, I apologize.
So moved.
The executive session.
Ah, the executive, thank you. That is three items, and is that still good for the three items? Thank you to you both. We have a motion, a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor, the first two items are related.
I'll vote, I didn't hear his aye, so I'll vote to make the fourth one.
Aye.
Thank you.
The first two items are related. It is a, they are related to the upcoming water and sewer... It is a, they are related to the upcoming water and sewer bond issue for the city of Carterville, which y'all approved an ordinance back a few months on. The first item is a bond purchase agreement, which authorizes the purchase of the bonds, of course. The pricing did happen today. The second item is a supplemental bond ordinance, which incorporates the pricing that happened today. And that will be a first reading of that ordinance. Gabe Egan with Raymond James is here. He will give you a brief presentation on this matter, and then afterwards, I will ask y'all to vote on the two items. We'll vote on one and carry the other.
Good evening, Gabe, how are you?
Doing great this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
You didn't hear Mr. Lovell, you don't want to make a liar out of him, he'd be giving a brief presentation.
Okay, I will do my best. I struggle with that sometimes, so we've gone into a lot of detail in these last couple of days, pricing calls.
Do what we need to do, so we can make a good decision.
But we had a very successful pricing. You know, for the last couple of weeks, we've been pre-marketing this deal, you know, talking to a lot of investors, from the smaller ones to the larger, you know, bond funds. When it all was, was done and priced out, we have an all-inclusive cost, all-inclusive true-interest cost of 3.78 percent fixed maturity. This is a 30-year financing, so it's much longer than the ones in the past, so we can keep water sewer system rates low, lower, so the final maturity is June 1, 2048. Fixed rate for the term of this, you do have the option in 10 years, if rates are lower, if we have some money saved up and just want to lower interest costs, you can pay them off, June 1, 2028. The security pledged to the bondholders is simply the water sewer system revenues, there's no tax dollars that are pledged to this money, to these bonds here. And the, the system revenues will be used to, to make the payments here. So, you know, one thing, you know, April 19th, when the parameters were approved, you know, this is well below the parameters, you know, the maximum debt service that was approved was $4,250,000. The actual maximum annual debt service is $3,622,125, so well below that, and the interest rates are well below what we thought they were. We, we did have a lot of orders, and we had about $110 million in orders, and the final amount was $57,305,000 for the, for the bond part amount. So some of these maturities were oversubscribed, some were undersubscribed, so we did have to buy a few, you know, underwrite holds and balances, Raymond James, our firm did. But the ones that were oversubscribed, we got to have some more favorable price adjustments, so when this all said and done, we had the, the fixed interest rate that I just mentioned here. One thing I just, I can't go without, at least, like, giving some credit to staff, because this, this was a lot of work for, you know, the, the water department, finance department in particular. Now, it's been a very long time since you've had a rated bond issue. In fact, this is the first go-around through this process that are Tom Reinhardt and Bob Jones, both sort of led the, the rating calls this time with Moody's and S&amp;P. You know, Dan was finance director last time, we had a publicly offered bond, so they both did great, as far as, you know, all the other support from, you know, Michael and the finance department, and, you know, you know, Dan, and, you know, just, you know, it just tells you, you know, Sam really put a good team in place here with the city manager. So we did get good bond ratings, AA3, AA minus, so, you know, AA category ratings from two rating agencies. Great news. If you haven't had a chance to look at the reports, you know, I think it'd be good for council, you know, if we could get that forwarded to you if you haven't already.
Yeah, I copy.
Great, great, awesome, okay. So just, you know, very, very successful day, very successful pricing. You know, there are some issuers with, you know, higher bond ratings, but they're typically larger. You know, I feel like, you know, especially the, the decisions you've made over the last five years to get, you know, rates up where they need to be, and you're, you're performing a debt service coverage, you know, all the things you control, you know, the rating agencies really commented on us being a positive. You know, the, the weaknesses are, you know, the size, and you do have some concentration in some of the utility users, but you can't really control that. So I think all the things that you can control, you know, we're, you know, really good, and should be, be proud of this bond rating. So, you know, I'll talk more, but I hope that's brief enough, but just, if you have questions, you know, please let me know, and happy to address them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Egan?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. The, so the first item is the water and sewer bond issue purchase agreement, correct?
That is correct.
And so if there's questions or more discussion on that, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is a supplemental bond ordinance. This is the first reading of an ordinance, and Mr. Lovell, if you'll take us through that.
Basically, it's supplementing the ordinance that y'all did back in April with related to the bond, which includes all the pricing that Gabe mentioned, and puts the actual physical numbers in the ordinance of how much debt we're going in, the schedule for paying it off. It is, it is recommended for your approval, though this is just a first reading.
Right. So any questions or discussion on that? I wouldn't think there would be, but this is a first reading, we'll take that up for final consideration at our meeting on the 21st. And the final item on the agenda this evening, it's an added resolution. Mr. Lovell, I'll let you handle that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. As y'all are all aware, our finance department discovered some discrepancies related to our utility billing, and because of that, it included some improper crediting of accounts, failure to credit payments and other errors, and possibly some theft, theft or fraud also occurred with related to that. Because of that, there's adjustments that need to be made to various utility accounts. We're asking tonight for the mayor and council to authorize the finance director, subject to the approval of the city manager, to credit up to $50,000 related to those accounts that may be involved. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Any discussion on this item?
Just relative to the theft, there is an ongoing investigation, and there has been an arrest made, for anybody that's listening and wondering.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments or discussion? If there are none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? I will channel my inner Diane Tate for just a second, and use this opportunity to, to thank everybody in this room for the contributions that you make to the city of Carterville, making it a great place. It's an honor to serve, it's an honor to serve the people that sit up with, being up with us, up here as a group, as a council, but the, the hard work and dedication that you all are making, along with all the other employees, is, is what makes this, makes the city a great place to be, and you're really impacting the lives of every citizen. I want to let you know, I appreciate that. Again, we go through, when we approve a budget like we just approved, it looks like it's real simple, or there's not an awful lot of time. This is a, a five-month endeavor. I know not everybody gets what they want, and it's, I just want to let you know, I appreciate the effort. I'd also be remiss, not going to get sappy tonight, Sam, but this is the last time you're going to be sitting next to me for one of these meetings, and I want to thank you for your, well, your 22 years of outstanding service, and especially the 10 years that I've had the honor to serve with you.
Sure.
You know, I look at navigating us through 2008, and, and the financials, you know, once I got in office, all the money went away, I don't know what happened there. I have to talk, I've talked to Mike Fields about that, but, but certainly, you know, the fact that a lot of us up here, I think, would, would, would say that you've made us look good. And you certainly, as Gabe mentioned earlier, you've, part of good leadership is assembling good people to have around you and keeping them around, and you've certainly done that, so.
Thank you.
I'll leave it at that, we'll get sappy at another time.
There you go.
So, and we look forward to the, the future leadership that'll be coming in a couple of weeks. So that being said, anybody else?
Yes, thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Dilly-dilly.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Adjourned. Didn't get her rump out of that guy. Stay go-